All right, it's about 5:30. Let's call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the Fledges of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Steve Heron.
Here.
Carol Montal.
Here.
Jay Jones. Lexi Murphy. Jeanne Enrou.
Here.
Okay, that just gives us four of them. Attendance guests, have those of you who are here sign our attendance sheet so we make sure we get your name and your attendance is noted. Make sure you've done that. And now we will begin the open opportunity to address the council. You have about five minutes to speak on a topic. You are welcome to do so. However, whichever order you want to, stand and identify yourself if you would and let us know.
Mine's a quickie. Teresa Ewell, a few weeks ago I asked about getting potholes filled in on Rubledge and Broadway, and nothing's happened. So I'm just curious about what the plan is. We have a lot of potholes yet on Main Street that have not been addressed, so I'm just hoping that there's some sort of plan before winter.
And our man's not here, so yeah, he can't speak to that, but we'll make sure he knows. I think he does.
I'd like to speak on item 12. Can I do that at that time versus?
You can, because it is an open discussion at that point. Anyone else here for a different topic, for a general topic?
Lilith Hanson.
Okay.
I was just curious on what the plan is for the streets, the signs, the weather problem. I heard it's not a safety issue, so.
Who said that?
The chief. Chief of our department.
He said it wasn't a safety issue?
He said it wasn't a safety issue. That's what he told me Thursday night. And if it's not a safety issue, if it's just an issue of Matt who drives a bus and comes up my street, if he goes to Sue Heron's and he goes down on that gravel road, he could go another block and go up where you guys own the city and where Chris Heron lives. There's not many parks there. I don't understand why he has to take that long.
I don't think it was just a bus that had issues. There was an ambulance still in too, so.
Ambulance got in my driveway when I needed it.
They said just lately there was one that went down your street and could have backup and go around. I heard that from one of the ambulance people.
So where are you guys at on it?
We're not taking the action tonight.
No.
But we leaned in with all the information.
Because I thought tonight was more talking about it too, because people couldn't make it on Thursday night.
So yes, you were talking about it today.
Okay, so there's no plan yet to do anything. How long's that going to take?
Hopefully another meeting.
Hopefully on the 16th, it will be on the agenda. If you want to speak to each council member individually, so you let them know your thoughts or your opinions on that prior to that meeting, so they know how to vote based on your representation, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Anyone else on that? Okay. Marlon's for later. Glenda, Nicole, right now, you're on, you're on, Mariana, you're on, Teresa. John.
Yeah, real quick comment. One, I drove by the, what used to be the Johnson property, and I was kind of reminded of a Jeff Foxworthy joke. If you mow your lawn and find a car, you might be a redneck. And that is far exceeded the eight inches, it looks like. So I don't know what plans you have for it, but it looks pretty nasty. And so, and we talk about community pride and stuff like that. Well, that doesn't show it. Anyway, what I really wanted to talk about was, I was thinking about the fact that I haven't seen a treasurer's report since June of 2022, and maybe there's been one since. I don't know, but we are, the city council is going kind of against the law there. It's right in our book at the monthly report. I won't bother you with reading it and stuff like that. I'm sure you guys have already read it. But I think it's pretty important. Since the treasurer reconciles the books and stuff, it leads me to believe that since we don't have a treasurer or the treasurer hasn't been doing his or her job, that the books haven't been reconciled for a long time. And I don't know a business in Paulina that can survive without reconciling their books unless they're government. And so, are we going to get that? Are we just going to let the new council and mayor pick the treasurer, or is this something that's going to be done soon? But that's all I have to say. It's just, in other words, I think the council would be asking about this about every week. Because it's important. You're on the line here for that, so.
Anyone else? Is there five minutes still? No? Okay, then we are on to item number six to approve the agenda for tonight. I don't believe we have any other changes or corrections requested, do we? Yet, okay, so that agenda is as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second it. Motion by Jean and a second by Carol to approve tonight's agenda as stated. Do we have any other discussion related to the agenda? There are none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes heard. Motion carries agenda as follows. Item seven, approve the minutes from the 9/18/23 regular meeting. You should have that in your packet as well.
Are we doing minutes at the meeting? Because we did do them at just beginning now, or was that just before?
We're doing a moment claims again too, because there's two longer for some of our vendors.
I'll make the motion at that. We approve the minutes from 9/18/23.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the 9/18/23 regular meeting. Is there any further discussion, corrections, or comments for the minutes? None. We'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented from the 9/18/23 regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes heard. Motion carries. Minutes accepted. Payment of claims. You have a sizable claims report, and there is an additional claims paper, a couple extra. Is that all? Questions for Michelle.
What was the Jack the Sewer line? Triple S services?
Two, three, four, five.
Bertha and.
Bertha and well, well, well.
Some residents were having issues.
I don't see anything else. I'll make a motion to approve the claims, plus the additional claims for Monday, October 2, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion by Jean and a second by Lexi. Do we have any further discussion or questions related to paying claims? Okay, all in favor of approving payment of claims, including the additional two claims on the additional papers, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes. Motion carries. And it's allowed for claims presented. And now we have Kiana Johnson with the O'Brien County Economic Development here to present and tell us what you've been up to.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight. And a little background, I apologize if you hear this every year, but it's always good to talk about it. So, O'Brien County Economic Development, we're a private nonprofit organization. We're funded solely off contribution dollars that we get from each of the communities in O'Brien County for its supervisors. So therefore, our board is made up of a representative from each community, along with a representative from the supervisors. And the city of Paulina's board rep is Marty Weber. He's also our treasurer. So at any time, you're welcome to speak to any of the board members, Marty, myself, if you have questions, comments, or need help with anything. So we roughly operate with a budget probably right around $170,000 a year. So thank you very much for your contributions to the organization. One of the greatest tools we have in our toolkit is our revolving loan fund. So we do gap financing. We work in conjunction with the banks. So if the bank's working on a project, say a new business looking to start up, or an existing business looking to expand, gap financing is really important. And we can come in and fill that void of one-third of the total project cost not to exceed $250,000. We started this program in 1993, in 2000, with just county dollars that each community had put in a little bit, and I think we had a pool of around $50,000. In 2005, we sought additional funding from the USDA, and as of today, I can say we have received over $2,500,000 from the USDA to grow that pool of money. So from 1993 through the end of last year, we've approved 67 loans. We have financed projects totaling over $5 million. Those projects have made capital investments over $34 million in O'Brien County. They've created 215 jobs. We've retained 312. And out of all the loans we've done, I can say we have lent to Paulina businesses. We've assisted with over $1 million. So that's a great investment in the city of Paulina, in O'Brien County. We're happy that we are able to be a part of those businesses. We do have a committee that gets the applications. They do the due diligence, make the recommendations to those. You can see board. Your Paulina rep is Cody Nelson. But any of the lenders in O'Brien County are familiar with the program, so they don't have to just, you know, bank with the local lender. We'll accept any application from the banks. So again, if you have a business that's looking to start up or expand, you know, please reach out to myself or any of the people on the list, because we'd be happy to help them. So another committee we have is the Valiata Day Committee, and this is one of our longest-serving committees. It was created in 1993 as well. They work very diligently in helping us with our agri industry, our ag business, the recruitment and expansion of that in the county. We've also been working with our Career Day, and part of that was integrating those Valiata Day careers into our Career Day program. Every year, we also give out an Ag Hall of Fame award. We give one for a business and an individual, and we do that at the O'Brien County Fair. It's just a great way to recognize those agribusinessmen who are contributing to the industry in O'Brien County. We also worked this year on a workforce recruitment initiative. We just had some meetings, really trying to grow our workforce and attract people to the area. And we'll talk about that a little more, but Valiata Day is one of those components as well. Another committee that we have, and I should say, all our committees and board members are volunteers, so anybody wanting to serve on Valiata Day or Tourism Committee, we'd love to have you. Always looking for more people to join us. Our Tourism Committee is really important, because as we're talking about workforce, what we're finding out, quality of life is so important, because people can live anywhere and work somewhere else. We're finding with remote work options, you know, you could live in New York and have a job, you know, doing poor business here in O'Brien County. So if you can live anywhere, we really want to show people, you know, why O'Brien County is a great place. So we've been working really hard to promote our sites and attractions, because we do have a people shortage. All my employers need people. A lot of our businesses could grow if we had more people. So really working on the quality of life and promoting ourselves. So two years ago, I had a group of bloggers come to me from Midwest Travel Network, and they asked me if I'd be interested in doing a pilot program with them to bring bloggers into O'Brien County to stay in our communities, to eat at our restaurants, to explore our sites and attractions. And so I wrote a grant to the state of Iowa, Travel Iowa, and I was awarded $10,000 to bring these bloggers in. And like I say, the city of Paulina was fabulous. All of our businesses in O'Brien County were really great to work with. They offered up lodging. They offered up meals. They offered up, you know, canoeing, you know, whatever it was, e-bikes. I know Eric from Paulina Hardware offered up e-bikes and canoes and the restaurants. And it was just really a great opportunity. So they wrote blogs and they did social media posts. And part of those grant dollars included someone to take all those posts, because I knew once they were done, I wouldn't have time to find them, to repost them. So we had somebody who did that as well. So if you get a chance, go out to our O'Brien County Tourism Facebook page or our O'Brien County Tourism Instagram account. You can see all those bloggers. We had four bloggers with this program that came to the area. And it was really unique. We had to find things to accommodate each of the travelers. One came as an individual. One came as a couple. One came as a family. One split it up over a couple different nights. So yeah, it was really unique. And we even got some to Germantown, so one of our bloggers. So that was great. So then the second year, we decided, let's add some value to what was already done and make day trip itinerary. So if somebody wanted to come, so one of the most, one of the bloggers, Sarah Borris, who owns Midwest Travel Network. So for example, we took her blog and was like, would you like to do what Sarah did? You know, and we created date trip itineraries that people can download on their phones or just print them off the internet. And then we can also then add value by reposting the original post, her original trip to O'Brien County. So we were awarded additional $5,000 for that from the Travel Iowa. So I'm happy to say, some of our statistics are on page two. Because of that initiative, the state of Iowa awarded O'Brien County Tourism the Outstanding Marketing Flare Aberration Award for 2023. So we were really honored to receive that for the efforts that we're trying to do in O'Brien County to promote ourselves. So if you see any of those great posts, please share them. That's just the best way to get the word out about O'Brien County. So we are working really hard to try and just, you know, promote O'Brien County and recruit people to the area. So also, Soul of Iowa campaign. I don't know if you've seen any of those commercials onto the Travel Iowa's been posting about why you should come and travel. Well, they had a contest, application for new people to be included in their new video. We submitted an application, and we were chosen. So just last month, the camera crew was up here. They did some more blogger visits and got some footage. So one of their newest videos will be launched, O'Brien County, will be partnered with the city of La Marse. So once those are done, I'll be sure to share with everyone, because it's pretty exciting to have O'Brien County be featured. I know one of the first ones that came out, I was actually in Planet Hollywood in Las Vegas, and I seen it appear on one of those screens, the Travel Iowa one. I was like, oh my God, that's Iowa. And now to think that we'll be featured in one of those and seen all over the United States will be pretty cool, so. We also started a trails committee, and I know they've met with, Paulina had a group that was put together. So what we're trying to do with that also is trails are a part of quality life, which is really big. So we're putting together a countywide comprehensive plan. And the reason for that is we're going to grab every city's plan, what they would like to see, think big, how we can connect all the cities. But by putting this comprehensive plan together, then when grant dollars come out, because there are a lot of grant dollars out there right now through Travel Iowa for trails, then we have the plan ready. It's a lot easier to have it ready, so when the dollars come, you can just apply for them. So we're working on putting that together too, so the committees can apply for some of those funds as well. And it doesn't have to be the paved trail. You know, we're starting out small. We're thinking, you know, signage, or, you know, just marking some roads that are designated just for trails. That's what we need to do to get started. So we've been working on that this last year too. I'd also like to mention with Travel Iowa, if there's a business or a site or attraction, please get your listing out on Travel Iowa. It only takes five minutes. If the city has time or the chamber, it's free. When people are looking to travel somewhere, they go out to the, they go on the internet. They go on Google. And if they're going to come up and they're going to find your attraction, also when they print the travel guides, then those listings that are included on their website are included in the travel guide. Again, it's free marketing, so it'd be really worth it to get all your attractions listed out there. I am going to skip right now the economic impact report, because that's on the next page. We'll talk about that. So workforce, what we've done with workforce, we celebrated our fifth annual Career Day this year. We did tours of our industries, and Paulina participants would be Mill Creek Machining and Agri Vision. We bring high school sophomores to tour the place of business. And we have all of our O'Brien County schools, Sheldon HMS and South of Brian, plus Cherokee, excuse me, Marcus has been a participant for quite a few years too. We don't tour Marcus businesses, but the Marcus students come over and tour the businesses in O'Brien County. We have lunch at NTC, and then we also award a Career Day scholarship. This year, we added an additional scholarship, and both of the recipients just happen to be from South of Brian schools. So it's a $500 scholarship that we give to the students. Also this, in 2021, we launched college and careers. Again, bringing, what I'm doing here is I'm bringing students into the school, the high school, to, and I focus solely on students, or I guess, I should say, not students, people in the workforce who live, who graduated locally and continue to work and live in O'Brien County. And I'm looking at young professionals, so trying to find somebody who's under the age of 30 to go in and talk to the young people. Because what I found is students don't want to listen to me. I'm like, mom, I'm a little lady that's telling them what they should do. So I found if I bring the young people in to talk to the young people, they're much more receptive. Tell them why it's a great place. You don't need to go to some big city, and because we have good jobs here, and we have a great quality of life. We have housing here. So that's been really well received. And we kind of hope if, you know, we can change the mind of one or two students every year to continue to stay here instead of thinking they have to leave, because we really just want to tell them, we want you to stay here. We want you to be a part of our community, and we need to start saying that. Instead of, our focus used to be, we try and get them back after they've left and went to college. Well, let's start now telling them, no, just stay here. We have great community colleges. We have great, you know, career opportunities for you here. So that's the messaging we're moving to now. So then to continue, we are very thankful for the funds we get from the cities and the counties. So we use those funds to match for additional funds, like I said, for the Travel Iowa grant stuff. So our leverage funds, to date, we have used our contribution dollars and received $269,353 just in grant dollars to do any programs that we want to do. And then our loans, of course, we use those to match to get $2,500,000. So we could do that without your support on any of the committees, your contribution dollars. So thank you very much for that. And then the chart, the economic impact, I love charts. So this is really cool. This is just for Paulina. This is something new through Travel Iowa. And interesting, it's, they have tracked people who visited your area for the last year. This is all 2022. How did they track them? Through your cell phone. So that is kind of creepy. They are tracking the pings from the cell phone towers for people who stayed more than two hours in your community. And so day trips, and then they can also track how long they've stayed. On the second page is the overnights, the length of stays. So most of them are day trips. And you can see the top origins they're coming from are Sioux Falls, then Sioux City, Des Moines, and so forth. What I find interesting with your chart is you have quite, they're pretty consistent all through May, almost through the end of the year. I'm going to guess most of that are people visiting the parks. Also, it could also be trucks coming into Mill Creek Machining or Agri Vision if they're here in town for more than two hours. So you have some pretty high months. And whatever you're doing, you did in November, December last year too, looked to be really popular. I don't know what those are, but if you can think about it. You brought people to the community.
Yeah, our Chamber of Commerce, we do Fall Festival, which is the end of October, and then we have a hometown Christmas in December.
Yep, you can tell. You had a lot of travelers.
I think Fall Festival brought in, well, I think we probably had in between 800 to 850 people. That's where down.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, so you can see that. What I do find interesting on the second page is your trips by the days a week. And so when I talked to the state of Iowa about this, they said, we are a little unique up here, because our Mondays have more travelers than our Tuesdays. And what's interesting is, because a lot of people close their restaurants or their business on Mondays, but by looking at this graph, all my communities in O'Brien County have that. It's, some even have Monday and Tuesday as more popular days than Wednesday. So just something as a chamber too, to, you know, and I'd be happy to send this report to you too, if you want to share it with the chamber, because yeah, something to keep in mind when businesses are, you know, thinking about that. So Monday seems to be a pretty busy, busier travel day than Tuesday. But I just think it's fun to see and kind of gives you a little insight, like you said, into November, December's are working. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you. Details. Thank you. Thank you so much. You bet. Thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the resolution to set trick-or-treating hours on 10/31, if that is what the council wants to do. In the past, it has been from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM within city limits on Halloween night, which is a Tuesday if I'm correct, right?
I'll make the resolution, so the trick-or-treating at Paulina from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on October 31st of 2013, or 2023. I'll second that.
And the resolution introduced by Lexi and then a second by Carol to allow trick-or-treating in Paulina's city limits from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on 10/31/23. And does anyone have any other concerns with that date or time? Let's go call for roll call vote. Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Montal.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Jeanne Enrou.
Aye.
Four ayes and one ayes. That gives a confirmed vote. Resolution passes. That number then put in the book. All right, the next item on the agenda is to set the hearing for the Hans' property and nuisance violation. Part of the abatement process is to allow them a chance to come to you and speak about their process or what they have left to do. And I believe you have the letter also, which was, it has to be done in writing, which you did. And you have the initial letter. And we're not really discussing it at this time. They just want to schedule it, and he could not attend tonight, so we're trying to make it this happen. So you have to set the date for them to come in, and then they can discuss it at that time. So at this point, if you, he is suggesting he would be available on the next meeting date of the 2016, sorry, the 16th, Monday, the 16th, at 5:30 did work for him, if that's what we would like to do, unless you'd like to have a separate meeting about it. We're also. We're also open to that.
Just think having that, that regular council meeting is just as good.
I'll make a motion that we set it up for the 16th and talk about the nuisance violations. John, can you come? I want to have the setting hearing for that meeting. 5:30? 5:30, 6:00, whatever.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Carol, seconded by Jane, to set the hearing for the Hans property nuisance violation on, to be Monday, October 16th, on or after 5:30 PM during our regular meeting. Is there any other questions or concerns over that? Okay, then we call for a vote. All in favor of setting the hearing for the nuisance property violations as Monday, October 16th, 2023 at 5:30. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. So ayes. Carrie's. Hearing is set. Okay, round 12. Discuss dead disease tree removal and replacement. Just as you know, Admiral Adkorn has done a number on our town and all of the state, and clearly is in several states. But we were up to 90 trees in city property and parking, not to mention all the rest that are on of our own properties. And so the concern is the, I believe we have our Schwayback scheduled for the 16th, the week of the 16th. So the night of the meeting, and then that sometime that week, they will be coming in to start the process of removing anything, tag, pink tag. And so steer clear of those areas during that time. So knowing that, and the fact that those will be done, then obviously any property that has it in your own lot on the other side, in your side of the sidewalk essentially, those are your responsibility to remove, and those still need to be done in the timely manner to prevent property loss and such. Is there a concern based, Glenda?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Are we, we are not going to be able to replace that tree on city property, am I right? And you guys decided no more trees on city property?
We did earlier, have a resolution to state that, and now there is. Yes, thank you. Nope, not that one. Anyway, right now we have, that is currently the situation. That was decided to amend that, or amend the ordinance. It says no parking, no planting, and parking, and no parking in any city-owned property.
The reason I ask is, I don't have much of a front yard. And when you remove those two trees on the parking park, I have absolutely not an ounce of shade on the front side of my house. So I'm not allowed to replace a tree.
At this time. So this is what this discussion is. Some other residents have similar concerns, and they are asking if there was a workaround. And so we've researched, some other cities have various workarounds, whether they ask for a permit, they ask for a chance. Marlon, I know you've done some research on this. Do you want to speak right now about this? I've given you some papers in front of you about the Coralville, and they show they have very specific rules of where to plant it, which we had somewhat, but not this detailed, and heights and types and things like that already, which exist. So given a very monitored program, it could be a possibility to amend, to allow that in certain instances. Go ahead, Marlon.
So, so thinking about, you know, taking out naive trees and not replacing them, I was talking to some people, and I checked the cities around here, their ordinances, and I haven't found any other cities that have totally banned replacing trees in the parking. It's more just making sure that it's managed, to make sure that they're, they don't. For example, it might be appropriate to not put trees in parking if there's power lines there, because that's always an ongoing issue. Because of the size of the tree, the species of the tree, that maximum height might be 30 feet, so you don't have as many issues down the road. They don't have as much of a root structure for underneath, et cetera. So I was looking back, you know, the Plena's ordinance before it was changed, allowed trees, of course, but it had, you know, some limitations on it. It excluded some species of trees, but it let people know where they had to space them so far away from corners, from alleys, et cetera. The alignment, you know, the distance between the sidewalk, if there was a sidewalk there, and the curb. And that got, that got changed to just say, no tree can be planted underneath street parks, street or parking. It's interesting, as I read it, our, chapter five of our ordinance is trees, and paragraph 7.01, the first paragraph in chapter five, says the purpose of this chapter is to beautify and preserve the appearance of the city by regulating and providing for planting, care, and removal of trees. So, so with that, it's like, you know, I think we lose some beautification, some health effects, some noise abatement potentially, some shade by, by blanketing the whole town, and basically saying to the whole town, eventually we'll have zero trees in the new parking as they all, all die. I think there's some, some benefits of having them, obviously, for all of those reasons. So I, I would like to propose consideration of your change, amendment to the ordinance they did back in March, from the March meetings of 2023, to look at possibly reinstating the prior tree ordinance with some additional restrictions that would address some of the key issues versus just a blanket ban on all trees in parking. Couple of things that, you know, so, so if you would consider that, I think alignment would still be appropriate, spacing, prohibited trees. Again, this one just limited, and it, it must have been when all the cities updated their ordinances, because you read all the ordinances in the county, et cetera, they all exclude cottonwood, pop, woodbox, elder, Chinese elm, and evergreen. Now there's some additional ones. Part of that is, you know, maintenance of that, those sizes of trees and types of trees. There's a, like, there's some information on the RDA Foundation site where they size trees by species. Like small, medium, and large. You can limit it to like the smaller trees, that's up to 30 feet. But if you would expand that prohibited trees to limit the size and type of tree within there even further, but, and then look at the spacing, if there's any changes that should be made to that. But then adding in there, as I mentioned, planted trees in parking areas wouldn't be allowed if there's overhead power lines. Street trees, which were height of more than 30 feet or X feet. And then to be able to control that from a city perspective, have a permit requirement. People had, if I want to plant a tree in my parking area, I need to have a permit from the city to make sure that it complies with all of these items. You know, if I power lines, it's like you try to, you try to say, I'm not going to grant the permit, because it's like, that's just an ongoing problem. But I think that we can do a lot for the city. The other thing is that as you drive around the town, as Glenda mentioned, there are a lot of houses where they're fairly close to the street. And if you take out the, the tree from the parking, you can't plant a tree there anymore, because there's not room. But if you take out the parking area, you can't put it next to your house. So we lose that ability from all of the benefits that trees create for us.
I think one of our deals was all, when we heard how many trees, the expense of removing them all. And then if you replant them and you get another disease, you're back at the same issue again.
Yep.
And I had seen, like Sheldon was one of them, that they were also addressing this problem. And they were looking at banning them also. I don't know if they ever did. I don't know if they finished it, but I know it did get talked about.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and I'm all for making sure that we manage the city in a, in a way that we don't have ongoing expenses. Right now, we're in a situation where hopefully it's once every 30 or 40 years, and you run into this number of trees. You know, and I'm not sure what it's going to cost us for Schwayback to take those down, you know, 20,000, 30,000. If you spread it over 30 years, you know, $1,000 a year to allow us to have trees isn't a very costly benefit to the city. It's unfortunate when it all comes at once.
Right.
The, the other thing that I, I think Michelle passed this round, an option two would be the same options, the same items and restrictions, but abilities as option one, but potentially have the resident. So right now, residents are responsible for maintaining that tree, pruning, et cetera. The only thing that they aren't responsible for is to take it down when it has to come down. We could have the, the resident say, it's like, so if I wanted to, if I had a diseased tree in my parking, and I wanted to have one there afterwards, if I would cover the cost of taking it down and planting a new tree, there'd be no cost to the city right now. One of the things is how to keep track of it. That way you wouldn't have to keep track of it. It just means that 30 or 40 years from now, the city might have to take that tree down, but they don't have to take it down now, because I would pay for that for the return for, you know, over being planted on there. So again, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a ballpark number of Schwaybacks cost. Let's say it was, I heard like $7,000 a day for three days or something.
$7,000 per day.
So, so if you could take down the naive trees in three days, that would be an average of $233 a tree. So as a resident, if I wanted to replant there, I could either say, take the pink tag off of my tree. I'll take it down and grind the stump and replant. And then it's the city's potential issue 30 years down the road when that tree has to come out. But the next resident might want to replace that tree, and if we already have that in our process, they can get a permit to plant a tree by taking down the existing one that you put in there. So that way we could, I think, without a big issue, have the cost warned by the residents that we wanted them to take for the responsibility of maintaining that tree that's in front of your place.
I do agree. I would hate, I hate to see all those trees never, nothing coming back. I like them. It does help you.
I feel like if the residents want to do it themselves and plant, I mean, I don't know.
They also need to make sure that they call and have it located though. Because I think a lot of people just plan, and they don't know what is underneath it. So that should also be.
That's what, right.
Part of, part of the, part of the permitting process.
Right, you have to get it located.
Right, yep.
Because there's a lot of people who just plan.
Right.
So they, they don't know what's there. I can't have any trees in my front yard because of the way everything is.
I remember when my, my parents took theirs down too.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, all of theirs, because nobody could see. I remember.
Yeah, for the corners and stuff.
Yep.
I remember that.
That, that corner spacing distance.
And that was a new tree.
Yep.
So I don't have any power lines in the front of my house. They're all in the back.
Right.
No, and it is especially when you know how much.
Well, and I think if people, if people like don't have shade, and we have shade now, and we take that tree down, then they have no shade. Like, I don't, you know, I think they should probably.
They'd kill our lives either, D.A.
We do not.
That's what I do now.
But it is sad, because there's not any.
All of our landscaping is planted for shade-loving, and so my hostas are burnt. And my hydrangea bush is the worst it's ever looked. And we're going to, we will take down, we've taken all our trees down ourselves. We've never gotten the city involved. And we would like to do that. We can do that again, and that's a bargain. If Schwayback is going to charge you.
That is a bargain.
Yeah, it is. Because it's more than that.
Thousands.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's a little more than that.
It's a little more than that.
So.
So you, since you brought that up, I received a text from Kelly this afternoon about the cost of, of this. And he said approximately 500, $5,500 a day. He can do up to 40 if they are small ones, 20 mediums, 10 to 7 big ones. He gave me an average today, which would be 10 to 15 trees. They have, have a lot of variables, size. Is it over the house? Can they just drop it? Can they give you an exact number of price? I can't do that, Kelly said. So about $5,500 a day if they can take down.
Steve, how many big, big ones did you say they could take down?
Kelly said about 20 medium ones and 10 to 7 big ones.
And how many small ones? But I don't know if we have any small ones.
I don't think, I think they're all 80, 100-year-old trees.
Yeah, for example, if some of them, I looked at.
The ones in front of my house are not that.
Mine aren't.
They're not that big either, but.
Like the ones in front of your house, they can easily be dropped. But there are some that are.
Huge.
Very large, over top of the house.
Well, the one across the street is a lot bigger tree.
Right.
That's dead.
Somewhere in, some, some are close to power lines and that sort of thing, so that, so that would be a concern.
So I don't know what we'd have to do. It's like, okay, so if, if the homeowner can take responsibility for it, just like they do with the rest of the trees. So if we have a dead or diseased tree not on the parking, we have to take it down. The cost is the cost.
Yeah, we already did that.
If, if it's in the, if it's in the parking, they have the option to have the city take care of it, and then you can't replant. Or they can take care of it themselves regardless of the cost, take the pink tag off. And we just have to make sure that they take the tree down in a reasonable amount of time. And, and then you just maintain your old landscape, including the parking, versus except the parking from that standpoint.
And I think that would be a workable way too.
I do.
If you have a property that has Southwest, taking those trees down is devastating.
Yes, it is.
It's devastating.
There is nothing left.
There's nothing.
But you'll still have a while until you get shade anyway.
You do, but you can buy larger trees. And that's not cheap either.
I was just going to say, those are $40.
Because it's a city property, city right of way, I think the city needs to do, control it. And I never liked putting more regulations and more intake, but that's why I think that to plant a tree in the parking, you have to make sure that you get approval via permit from the city.
Hardwoods and.
The type of tree, the species of the tree, the location of the tree, the fact that you.
Add it to your abstract. So then whoever buys your house someday knows that this is the rule.
So will it be grandfathered in? Is that kind of what, if, if a new person, you sell it, a new one, then how is that?
Well, I think, well, the, the ordinance in the city would continue to be that you can't plant a new tree in the parking without a permit. And if the tree is dying there, you can either have the city take it down, which says you can't replace it, or you can take it down yourself and get a permit to replace it. So that would just always be there for every homeowner, because that would just be in the current ordinance as people are looking at.
It'd probably be nice for the homeowners to know that they're buying a new home.
Well, I mean, something like, you know, years, stuff.
You don't?
You don't.
Just by in the rules.
I don't.
This is the rule. So this is something we probably need to put on for next, because we can't take action.
Maybe we'll kind of wait till he gets a bunch of them done and see where we're at too.
Well, and then we can.
The only problem with that is that people are willing to take pink tags off.
They want to get them down.
Do what they're on.
We're on the list to get ours taken down.
Yeah.
We're not counting on the city to do it.
Oh, you are. Okay, I was going to say, because I think.
We pick them up, like I said, we'll pick up where we're stopped.
But didn't you get a pink little?
I, I got a pink one, yeah. Isn't it trees, no two planting them, isn't it better to do it like in the fall time? Or like that's, it's usually so.
Yes.
People might be wanting to do that here.
Okay. So if you want to get it planted, you should be doing it.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you can take action on it next by the 16th, which is the date that's where.
Effect yet though. She has three, at least two readings.
Two readings.
Oh, that's right.
Can you make a list of people who are saying that I want to be substantially?
Maybe save gas for the last.
Well, that's a lot.
Good, and how are we communicating this to everyone? What if we take a tree down? They're like, you didn't tell me. I could have had, I could have paid for it.
Yeah.
Most people aren't going to complain to people well.
Well, they can, you can come up with what was the cost of it, and they can, they can still pay for it, because they have to, you know, it's a big tree.
Fortunately, that's true.
On my door, yeah.
Yep, they pay it back to the city.
So $45,000 check. That was my dream, huh?
Yeah.
Got to get some things approved.
Or you can take your oak trees down, and then my hours.
Really do. I'm baffled at how they're going to get that many trees down on one day and get them all cleaned up.
Well, I said that too, and they talked about 45 trees a day, and I thought, holy cow.
I don't think it'll go that fast, just because that's.
They're on a growth.
But that was what they were saying earlier this year.
And do they expect our guys to help clean up, or?
And I think we, we knew that, yeah.
Well, that, those two trees.
Pile up.
Pile up.
So then we're going to maybe take them off.
It's like, everyone's, I mean, we're too huge in their life, but it's going to be.
Anyway, thanks for your consideration.
I guess maybe can we put something out on like, like on her website and the Facebook page? And if you would like that, then like, give them a call to Michelle, and then come on the list and maybe have them last, and then.
Maybe have them come in, because I'm sure she doesn't need 50 people calling her every day saying, come in, at least sign up. I mean, at least you don't have to take a call and just have a sheet that they put their name and address on.
And then put them as last, and then that's.
Or they don't stand in top.
The 16th, we can do the first reading or something.
Yeah, you can get the first reading. You'd have to still wait two weeks to get the second, and then you can get rid of the third.
Right, I mean.
How many residents was that effect though? I know trees, you have about 90, but is it maybe 40? Is there a couple trees? Is there a couple trees on each?
Thirty to forty, I would say.
I think it's one of those.
Oh.
I have those for sixty that they have.
Is it something that you can give them a letter directly so they know? Because they might not see if you have it on.
Everybody has Facebook.
And I mean, the guys are out, you know, driving around, they could put it on there.
Is there like a generic letter we can send out?
Well, we have that whole list, remember, that we had of all the trees that were, I still got it, I totally got it.
I still do, yeah. Is there like just those people we can send like a generic letter to and get it out so they can have it before the next reading? And then also put it out on the website?
Because you have addresses on all those.
Yeah.
That would maybe be a better thought.
Or do ninety fires or sixty fires and get a group of volunteers to go to our door and.
Actually, it's not a bad idea in general about our tree committee. We kind of need a tree huggers committee, I think, for community members who would help also facilitate this program maybe, but also to go around and explain people that you have to trim. You know, a lot of, a lot of people are complaining with walking, it's too low here and there, and the garbage trucks hit them and such. So we do have some education that needs to be done, I think, with residents on what they need to trim and how to handle that.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And then just also the fact of like, we talked about the grant, we didn't apply for it this year. That was to get funds to help us replant, but we will need to do a sizable replant coming soon across our public area as well. Even if residents do not, we still need to replenish some quantity of those ninety trees. And then we have to try and get diversity.
Could we talk to put it in the parking?
Yes, well, yes, they'll have to somewhat in the parking, unless we can plant one in your backyard, but.
So what committee does this fall under?
Oh, for that committee. I'm talking about with the citizen committee for helping create new ones for that, but.
Yeah, but what committee?
This would be probably under, it's either utility streets and alleys or parks and properties. Those two, I would guess. I would say more of like parks and probably.
So those are on parks?
Or is it utility streets and alleys? Well, it can be on both. It really, for the residence point, it would be that way. Other point, it's parks.
Kind of bold, like camp, like one from each group, like from the parks, and then the utilities, those two people go and make some.
I don't know, go door to door and.
I'm not.
What I'm getting at is if we're going to amend the ordinance or, there's got to be a committee to write this ordinance, write the policy.
That's not usually going to be, Tisha writes the ordinances, amended ordinances legally.
Yeah, but we should have a committee on the council that writes the agreement, writes the.
Mark Smith.
As far as legal wise, Tisha would write the ordinance, but who's going to write the, I mean, we're leaving Marlon to do this, because it's really, I mean, if he wants to do it, that's fine, but it's really the council's responsibility to set the rules and.
Do you not be willing to help under the direction of the council if you just want something to do it?
No, because I think that's going to take a little bit of time, or with the committee, like you said.
Yeah, it's going to take some time.
To figure out for sure which way we're going to go, and then we got to approve it.
I mean, come up with a policy, yeah.
Yep.
And then.
And it's all.
I mean, it was a year for dog revisions, so we're at.
Yeah, right.
Next hall by the time we have that with this stuff.
Hopefully, we don't want to be going that long.
So. That's my concern there, but.
The only concern, I guess one concern I have is obviously like our term is up at the end of December, so what happens if we don't get back until? We shouldn't be on it, so you two, or it's not up until twenty-five, until the new, until the new term.
Which is the next media if it's not happening.
Right. But, but that's just, I guess, my opinion. But if you two don't want to, then one of, I mean, we can, but then whoever, obviously we don't, you know, I would, that's a guess.
It just, it seems like if we get the right people focused on it, we can.
Get it done.
It's not real complicated, because it's not a lot different from what we had. It's really going back to what we had with some additional, some additional restrictions.
Right.
Kind of targeting items versus blanketing.
Because even that thing, you should put it up. Coralville has a lot of different thoughts and stuff on it too. I didn't read it all yet, but, so, and then they got a permit and everything with it. So I don't know if that's what we want to use, but be a thought to start.
You would be willing to help with that?
Yeah, I'd be willing to help.
I would be willing to help you with it, and whoever else might want to, or, you know.
Okay, I want to see if we can have one other council member assist.
I'll help with it if you, if you want to sign us as the committee.
We can call ourselves the Tree Huggers Committee.
There you go.
There you go.
Bring up past history. We were fighting developments, an overdevelopment of an area up there, and the mayor up in our twin city suburb called our group in the council meeting, "Tree hugging eco-terrorist extremists."
That's a lot.
Yep.
That won't fit on a bumper sticker.
No, no. Tree huggers is just.
And then, yeah, then that committee can also work with maybe Eric to make sure we can get the diversity of tree here available to people to purchase, and that he has, and has some feedback also on the rules as far as planting restrictions and advice, so that he can also hand that out when people go buy a tree, they get the information, they know they have to come here, and all that together. Yeah, that's probably not happening in time for the sixteenth, honestly, but, no.
We'll see what can be.
We'll see what we can get by then anyway. Okay.
So what do you need to do? If we could possibly have a good draft done by the sixteenth, to be acted on on the sixteenth, is that possible? If we.
Yeah.
Well, let's see what happens. You just have to have the official whereas is written in there.
Whereas, we're too full on that.
There's an example in the back of the book. Yes, it's possible. And she may have some other ideas too. What we need to do is amend what we had before, or just amend it with further additions.
I could let it grow up like I did the Linden tree and have a bush.
You're almost going to change from that in another year or two, you might get some shade.
Yeah.
So the big thing is, is, it sounds like you're willing to consider it anyway.
Yes.
So we can, we can now do some checking with some cities around here, and they may be on through a process to handle this as well, so.
Right. Any other thoughts? Yeah, I think it's a good idea to be proactive here, because otherwise, once those ninety trees are gone, we're going to be looking around like we're shopping off, like at the lake when I went down that, it looked like a war zone.
Yeah.
It was there. Or if you remember one, was it Alton or William, whichever one got hit so hard, all those naked trees were around all four now.
A lot of our main trees are going to be gone.
It's rough.
They're on the answer.
Are there any on the other side?
Oh, yeah. Nobody's on with you?
And make sure your committee addresses that blanket policy, because to make a blanket policy or law because something might happen, that, I'm also looking forward to the future of what, what, where does that stop? You know, are we going to outlaw other stuff because something could go wrong with it? We got trees now, are you going to outlaw a tree? Because who saw Dutch elm coming? Yeah, nobody, nobody did, but all of a sudden, we had to get rid of all the elm trees. And then all of a sudden, now we have this Emerald Ash Bore. Well, thirty years ago, forty years ago, when you planted those trees, nobody saw that coming.
Eight years.
What?
My ash has got to be eight years.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's got to be.
I'm just going with the data, everybody, yeah.
Gee, where did you hear their trees, maple trees, that they were having problems with?
Oh, Murray was talking about that. Murray was talking with Randy about maple trees on the East Coast.
Well, that's due to the.
Storms?
No, it's an invasive moth looking thing, lantern, lantern flowers.
That's on the DNR website too. You want to read all about those pests and what they're watching and what they're worried about.
I was outside my house on, with those water, fly swatter, because they were just in hordes. They didn't have a way back to.
Something that's just out there, though.
Well, no, they're coming this way.
Just like the ash bore came from Eastern Asia.
They got another one.
And since a high percentage of our trees are maple trees, we might want to steer away from maple trees as replacements on the.
We might have enough of those.
Let's just get the balance.
Fruit trees, and then we, ours is the fruit.
Yeah.
Or you can get the ones that don't give fruit, you just get the little berries.
Are there any other treatments or have they come out with anything besides the nuke option?
Really?
I don't know. Have they come out with any other treatments for Emerald Ash Bore now, or is it still the nuke option?
It's just that you got to keep doing it all the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had it done two years ago with bunkers did it, and we, last spring we did, it was a year ago, last spring we did the bond around it, but it still didn't help it.
Still didn't help. I was just wondering if there was other options.
Maybe you caught it early enough.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't know, I think my parents, they caught it pretty early. I don't think that.
They saved it.
Yeah, they couldn't save it.
They hardly, so.
It's a lot of money, so you want, you got to do it every year.
An injection tree, is that what they do?
I think so, it's aroused.
Our first one wasn't injected, but the little whatever.
Okay.
Spikes, and then this last time we poured stuff around it.
Okay, well, we look forward to seeing and hearing some results here by our next meeting.
Tree huggers.
Get some excitement.
Yep.
The trees. Just to put the big ribbon around the ones you're going to save or something. No camping out in them though, I think there's an ordinance against that.
No camping out what?
In the tree, in a die.
Oh, in a tree, okay.
Don't, like, when I stand up on there, don't have the tree down.
Don't tam yourself to the tree, yeah, right.
Yeah. All right, two reports. So we have sent out, I think Michelle was, if you're going to ask that, but newsletters went out with, it's Public Power Week this week, which we are a public power utility, of course, and so MRS has some things, and American Power has it as well to share out, but we'll be doing that. And then the big thing to communicate is our garage sales, our junk pickup, and now she's scheduled the household hazardous waste management pickup as well for the trailer on Tuesday.
Oh.
So that means by October tenth, this place should be shipshape.
Hazardous stuff on Tuesday, right?
Yeah, Tuesday, yeah. I just started putting that out, I think we just got that confirmed, and there, she was posting things about what can and can't, and what the costs are, like tires can be picked up, but there's a fee and.
Right.
Like that. So again, if people have questions, have them call in and they can answer them. And if they don't, we'll land, we'll tell them.
Right.
All places can be called. Also, in the newsletter and on the site, I don't know if you saw it, but Kayden's lead survey has gone out, so hopefully you'll all go do that, the lead pipe reporting that is required here in the next year, I believe. So this process has begun to, it's requesting photos and to prove what kind of pipe you have in your, in your home. So it tells you how to do that. It just shows you pictures of what you need to set pictures of and to write and document. It's, it's got a link on the newsletter, it's just a little, a little survey.
So it happens to have the pipes and stuff where.
Then they, we have to come in and do that, we just need to have documentation of what and then have them remediated, like in this testa situation, they're, they'll have to be converted and changed over. Which now, when anything happens and the guys have a leak, they have to replace them.
So is that our cost?
That I don't know.
Because if I want to replace the kind of.
That Kayden would be a great expert for that. Kayden took over on that project. And it might say more in that there's a little initial email part, I don't have it handed in front of us, but.
I remember, I read through some of it too, but I remember how.
It says, "It's up to you to have it replaced," I can't remember. I think it's mostly we have to report right now, if the government needs the utility to report all of them, and to see how many and how much will be affected.
So you want pictures also?
Yeah, there's pictures there, you'll upload or bring in or whichever. There will be, there's paper copy, they can give you if need be, but if you can do it differently, you're going to have to replace it. I don't know if it'll be immediately, but I'll bet you that's what it'll be.
Yeah, we have, Tasha just kind of has those pistols. I'm not Tasha.
No, you give that to your hubby.
No, not him either.
Well, that survey, the junk, the pickup, the HMR.
Do you guys have a lot of people for garage sales?
Not too many, no. There might be people wanting to have it, but that aren't getting in on the.
People sign up, a lot of them for the junk pickup yet or not?
Not yet there either. That will be. Yeah, until this Friday, yeah. Pretty busy. Yeah, that's kind of happened last time in the spring. A lot of procrastinators. The fire, okay, Ruby had Bolet. Kelly's not here to give his report tonight, but hopefully he will be back. Michelle, did you have anything additional to add?
No.
Mr. Baker, would you like to contribute to our free report tonight? Anything to report?
I was going to have a question.
Okay, Ryan gave, he cannot be here tonight, but he does have a nice report, and I was just going to, which you all can read yourselves, but on Wednesday of this week is a national test tied to FEMA, so you'll get an alert on your phone, and it explains it there, and also Jared Johnson has sent out an email about that, so we'll post something on our sites as well, but just so that, you know, it's okay, nothing bad is hopefully happening then, it's just going to be during 1:20 PM Central Time on Wednesday, the FEMA alert. So he has a lot of other updates and talks about Fire Prevention Week is October eighth to fourteenth, and they will be doing something about cooking safety, because cooking related fires count for fifty-one percent of all fires reported. And then they have Trump or Treat, which is going to be on October twenty-eighth, if they want the fire truck out, and they always show the kids and hand out fire helmets and do that. I think that's about it. I think he's always available to answer any questions you have related to that. Same, I assume, for Lori. Not heard anything more. Matt cannot attend tonight, he said he might have something for the next meeting. Any committees met other than the tree huggers? Okay, then any other council comments?
I want to thank you for remembering to flip our electrical in September. I see it on the bag, and I thought, yes, girl, yes.
Thank you.
Rebates back again.
Good job.
Yes, and then what, May, flip again.
All right.
Nope, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I'll make the motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Becky and Jean. Any other discussion to prevent this from adjournment? Boys, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, much of carries, meeting adjourned six thirty, six p.m. Thank you.